Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 24th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge Legions.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, move on to the roll call members. Matt, roll please.
Sure, Mike Kincaid.
Present.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Sandra Jasonowski.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Fair.
John Copeland.
Here.
Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Rob Hawkins.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, and move on to the approval of the minutes. And no, no new minutes yet. We got all the board of works done, so we'll get the city council ones, the next one. All right, old business then. I have nothing on my agenda for old business, anything from the council? Nope, okay, new business then. First item up is a planning and zoning non-reverting fund request. Kristi Spencer.
Evening. The planning department is looking to enter into a contract with Document Mountain for scanning historical documents that we have. It's, the funding request is out of the non-reverting fund for fifty, total of $53,300, which would also cover upfront costs for the scanning and document hosting for 2025. So this would be money that was not budgeted out of the non-reverting fund for 2025. This would be additional funds. The planning department has historical records, just basically from 2000. We do have some 1990s documents, but there's 10 file cabinets full of historic building permits, building plans, surveys, Board of Zoning Appeals documents, Plan Commission documents, that they have been moved over the course of almost 20 years, four times. So we need to find a more permanent storage for these records and also in a format that is searchable, so that we can find the information when we need it.
Yeah, I would say this has been on my kind of to-do wishlist for our different departments for a while, and the plan department, actually, we had a guy walk in, I mean, solicited us and said, hey, here's our services we provide. And frankly, I think they checked a lot of the, all the boxes that the Plan Commission or Plan Department was looking for. We create a lot of paper as a city, certainly, and recently, we've been moving more towards a paperless system, and we have records of that, all those things, obviously, before a certain date, right? A lot of paper, a lot of filing cabinets. So certainly makes it a challenge and spends extra staff time that we have to go and search through and try to find, hopefully, whoever filed it 20 years ago, filed it properly in the right folder, and all those things. As you can imagine, there's a lot of headaches with that. So appreciate Kristi bringing this to us tonight, really, but the, the concept too is also to kind of have the Plan Department be kind of the guinea pig with this, see how this works, see how the process is, see how smooth it is, if it works well for them. We then maybe could then also go to other departments that have other records as well, such as the Police Department, which, you know, we have a lot of police records that need to be kept, but they, they can be digitized, right? So there's things that we can kind of work towards with that. So at this time, are there questions for Kristi?
Yeah.
Sandra's first.
Okay.
I read, I read some, a little bit about this. Is this a microfiche? Is that what it is?
No, it's not. It is actually a PDF document that they will create, and they have demonstrated it for us. It's, it's a very high-quality scan. It's, it looks better than the original, almost. It's really nice.
So they scan it for you, then?
Yes.
You don't have to pay somebody to come in and scan everything?
Correct, no. We package up the documents, send it to them, they scanned it, and send it back to us. They also host the, the site where the documents will be stored, so.
Yeah, so essentially stored in like an offsite, you know, data center, cloud, whatever you want to call it, that we can access from our system to then search through those, look up an address, and pull all the records that relate to that address in the last, you know, time period, so.
And it's going to be PDF format?
Yes.
That's good.
Dick, question?
I, I didn't have a question. I just had a comment that I did go to the website and to check out the company, because I didn't, never heard of them before, and, and because I wanted to see who their client base was, and they had a lot of municipal and county government sites that were part of their client base, so I'm just pretty confident that way and so forth, what they were doing.
I think there's a lot of cities that have the same problem as well, too, and someone realized there's a way to have a better, better system for us. So I will also mention, too, that these are, no, these are private documents, these are all kind of public records, right?
Just getting ready.
So anyone, you know, coming out and request our Plan Department from these today, right? So there's no sensitive personal information in these at all. It's all things that will be publicly available to the public regardless, so.
And the public can access it on the website, or?
I don't think we have it set up where they can access it, but we certainly could go, if they become requested from our office, they could then pull it and then share with them, either digitally or print it off for them, so.
Not have to wait for the?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, or to wait for a staff person to go find the right filing cabinet and dig it out, and fingers crossed they found it, so.
Question. How secure is that, other than not public information? I'm sure there's documents in there that's not public information, some of it.
So we do, yeah, so we don't keep information like social security numbers, private information. So our applications have a homeowner's name and an address. So we don't have, we do not store, we do not keep private, personal information for our residents that come in and get permits or applications.
When all the, all the big?
I mean, again, these are all private, these are all public documents, right? So the public today could request any of these documents today, and based on APRA and all those things, we would provide them to them, right? So it's, there isn't anything sensitive with it, so. And there is a security system they have installed, firewalls, offsite storage, all those types of things, typically, as you see.
I'm not an IT person, but they do, they did explain it to me, that they do have firewalls, and.
That's fine.
Yes.
Did you say, did you say that all departments could use it, like the Fire Department, the Police Department?
They could, yeah. Yeah, we're kind of guinea pigging, yeah. Kirk Treasurers Office, a lot of documents in there, too. Yeah, so we're kind of guinea pigging it with the, the Plan Department. They, probably them and the Kirk Treasurers Office probably have the most documents, but obviously, the police records are very sensitive, so like, some of those things need to, that's make sure, all that, but yeah.
The, as the other departments, so say it works, okay, if we decide to do the other departments, is there an extra fee then, or is this just for you, this 50?
There would be an extra fee, so they charge per page that they scan, and then, so there would be that fee for whoever, whatever other offices want to participate in it.
Questions?
And remind me what the total ask was again, Kristi, I apologize.
$53,300.
Thank you. Questions for Kristi? Okay, any public comment concerning the funding request? Okay. With that, would entertain further discussion or a motion from council? Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Sierra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's approved. Thank you, Kristi. All right, next up, we have the Fire Station 13, Build Operate Transfer RFQ, recommendation of awards to selected offer. Kevin and Chief Batts.
Thank you very much. I guess I'm just here to talk through the BOT process, the Build Operate Transfer process, what we're doing, and how that is in keeping with Indiana Code. If you have specific questions about the fire station, or maybe the, the design team, or decisions that have been made architecturally or functionally regarding the building, Chief Batts is here, we happy to talk more about that. I'll stick to the contractual contracting side of this and let him speak to anything fire service related.
Yeah, I was going to have him kind of talk about, if you kind of give a overview of kind of what we're doing tonight, and then have Chief kind of talk about.
Perfect.
How that process goes.
We were thinking the same thing. So to back up a little bit, back in February of 2023, subject to Indiana Code 523-5, we issued a request for proposals and qualifications for teams that want to propose on, on delivering a new fire station project to the city of Lebanon through the state's BOT statute. That's Build Operate Transfer. It's essentially, you choose a team based on the qualifications of the team, and the team typically includes a developer, a contractor, and designer that will deliver a fire station project. And there's a number of different, well, any really public project can be delivered in the same manner, but this has become a really commonplace process for procurement of fire stations. So after proposing, posting that public RFQ slash P in February of 2013, there were six responses that were submitted, and the BOT committee, led by Chief Batts, chose the, the team of Greg Martz, Core Construction, and RQAW design engineers, in order to move that process forward into what the process would define as a scoping period. So a scoping period is once you've chosen the, the most qualified team, you then work with them to develop the scope of your project, and ultimately, the fee, the cost associated with your project. And essentially, that's where we're here tonight. After going through that process and negotiating final and best offers with the most responsible offerer, we, that submitted proposals, we are here tonight to make a recommendation to determine that the, that that team, the team of Greg Martz, Core Construction, and RQAW, to be the most reasonably susceptible team of being selected for a BOT agreement. That's very specific language that I had to use, because that is in the BOT statute. So there's two steps tonight. One is to make a recommendation that that team is the team that is most reasonably susceptible for being selected as an offer in the BOT process. And then the next item on your agenda would be to set a time and date for a public hearing to review the contract documents that would govern that process. So that's what we're here tonight, is to make that recommendation, and then now would probably a good time to turn this over to Chief Batts, to maybe talk a little bit more about the process and the team that he's chosen.
Good evening. Station 13 will be the third fire station for, for the city of Lebanon. It'll be located across from Menards, in between Triangle Asphalt and Aspire. This project has spent many, many years in development. We've worked with ISO and the county to do a deployment analysis, to see where our next fire station needs to go. We try to maintain a four-minute response time everywhere in the city, and that triangulates our coverage. It provides great access to the Business Park. We'll be moving Ladder Company 213 to Station 13. Will also give us great access to 65 traveling south. Along with that, some of our older communities, Marley, Hoosier Estates, Prairie Heights, all of those are right in the vicinity, well within the four-minute response time. Very excited about this project. Boone County EMS and Witham Hospital will be moving a medic unit inside the new fire station, and they will be stationed there as well 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Along with Medic 13, we're going to be putting Squad 213 in there. I'll talk a little bit more about that this evening, when we talk about the trench rescue program and the new squad. But those are the, that's the equipment that's going to be located in the new station. Can I answer any questions about that, or about the group that we chose to move forward with?
Will Center Township still have an ambulance there, too?
No. No, they have, Boone County EMS and Witham Hospital is, they are choosing to move their medic unit to the new fire station.
Chief, could you touch on why that area was chosen around the Menards area? Why, why we thought that it was the best spot for this location?
From a deployment analysis point of view, to be able to drop a pin, if you will, and then respond from that point out, and still get a four-minute response time, that's, that's the, the sweet spot, if you will, with fire truck response. It's a myth that fire trucks move quickly, they do not. Our new ladder truck weighs 40 tons, it will get nowhere quick. So we need to strategically put our fire stations in locations where we can responsibly respond within that four-minute timeframe.
Is there a geography of the city that creates challenges serving that Marley area?
There are railroad tracks that we have to deal with, out off 250 north, that, that can hamper response time from time to time. And just the layout of the city, if you will, just traversing the city, going down 39, 32, it's just, it's difficult at times, and this is the most responsible area for a fire station.
Does your truck, your trucks, do they fit under the railroad tracks, like on Camp Street?
No.
Or on Noble Street down there?
We do not use the Noble Street viaduct, because it is very tight, and it's a blind turn. We just feel like, from a safety point of view, that's just not good for the public or for the responders to make that blind turn. So we, we do not use it, and they simply will not fit there at Hoy Avenue.
Chief, my question would be, when you got to run an emergency, and you got to come out there, and you got to go south, do you go all the way up Sam Rosten Hill there, or do you go down Main Street around to the light?
We'll go to Main Street and catch the light. That's, that's a very safe intersection, if you will, and we would be able to take.
Is there a need for a, and I, there could be one there, I don't know, I haven't been by there when a fire truck's going through there, but is there a emergency light there at the intersection there that shuts everything off until the fire truck gets through?
We are looking into that, just from a, a safety point of view, if that's something that we want to explore, just a, another alerting system for the public. We also have the HAZ alerting system. Deputy Chief Young brought that project to the city, which, if we're running emergent, and you have certain apps available in your, in your car, that it will alert you to oncoming fire apparatus. It's a great program, and it's, and it's expanding.
Could you touch more on the, the team with the Greg Martz Core, RQAW?
We've met with several teams, and RQAW builds a lot of fire stations, designs a lot of fire stations, if you will. And with their experience level, we knew what we were looking for. This is a very modest building, around 12,000 square feet. We wanted it to have a ropes tower. This is going to be our tack house, this is going to house our ladder truck, our ropes team, our trench rescue team. And we just felt, RQAW and Core were very approachable and easy to work with when we met with them, very personable, and we established a relationship almost immediately. They were quick to answer questions, put our mind at ease when we needed to make changes, they were willing to do that, exploring the best cost, cost options available. It's very comfortable with them, and then Greg Martz, the city has worked with him before, and his name just kept coming up as someone, as a facilitator, that really knows how to do this properly.
Is it pretty similar to the one we, the one down south here?
Not at all.
Not at all?
That's going to remain our headquarters station. This is going to be two and a half bays, and eventually, we're looking at four or five years in the future, possibly, our squad that we're stationing there, that will transition to an engine company, and will run both a ladder and an engine out of that building. But it will really look nothing like that station.
What about staffing? We got the staff now, or?
It's, we do, it is very, very tight, if you will. We are wanting to add staff next year. We are hoping that we can add six firefighters in 2026. We can do it with the staffing now, but it's, it's very tricky to get it done. If there, emergency comes up, to where someone has to leave, if there's an extended illness, what have you, it really puts us in staffing woes, and we want to get away from relying on overtime. And you've seen, the last couple of years, we've just continually exhausted our overtime budget, trying to maintain staffing levels. So we are taking a truck, we're not adding a truck, we're moving a truck from Station 13, excuse me, Station 11, moving that ladder company and its crew to Station 13.
Keith, can you, microphone?
When are you trying to start, and when do you want it finished?
Core is ready to go. If we can set the, the next date for March 10th, we're looking at a midsummer, midsummer at breaking ground, and a one-year build.
How long does that take to build?
One year.
One year?
One year is what they're shooting for with a midsummer start. Completion in 2026, end service.
Yep, end service 2026, yep.
So I guess my next question is, how we're going to fund this thing?
Yeah, so Kevin can touch on that a little bit later, too, if we have, or I guess we can do it now, but.
Yeah, essentially, we've, so the, the preliminary pricing we've seen from the scoping period, this, it comes in just under $9 million, 800, $8,999,000. And we've had Baker Tilly run analysis on that. And essentially, what we're proposing would be a, a bank loan, a short-term bank loan that would cover those, those, the operating costs. So that's, that's the thing with a BOT program, right, is you don't pay anything until the building is done. And usually, there's a very short operating window, where the builder builds, operates the building, and then transfers the building to you, and you owe them the cost of the building. And throughout that process, you lock in a guaranteed price. So the price doesn't go, doesn't go up. They cannot change order of the price. You lock in that guaranteed max price. If there are savings along the way, the savings comes back to the owner. But essentially, that BOT process typically has a very short operating period, but there's no reason in the statute why it has to be short. So essentially, we can extend that operating period out and enter into a short-term loan to cover those operating expenses with existing funds on hand, could be taken from Public Safety Lit, in the, in the order of a magnitude of about $400,000 a year. Once it's, the building's complete, and at the end of that, three years, then there most likely would be a bond issued to pay off the, the full construction price of the, of the facility.
The, the reason we wanted to approach it this way, certainly, obviously, we know with the LEAP revenues that will be coming to the city, and this will frankly help us serve the LEAP area, certainly, the things west along 32. Combine that with the, the Business Park TIF, right? We kind of wanted some more time to understand how those would all kind of shake out together, and that's kind of why we're essentially kind of planning for a three-year shorter time payoff, but then working through like the longer financing, like how it all layer together, once we kind of get some more clarification with the Business Park TIF and the LEAP district revenues and all those things, to not burden the taxpayers with this project. So that's kind of how we're, why we're, how we're approaching it, and, and why it's structured that way.
But it allows us to start construction this summer, have them in next year, as opposed to waiting to three years till we fully understand what our, our financial package and picture looks like with some of the growth coming in the area. So we're, we're able to, we're able to not be reactionary when it comes to fire service at the growing city.
Question?
On, on financing, bad case scenario, nothing happens out west, everything stops, would we still be able to pay for this station without new TIF and taxes?
Yeah, I mean, we have, what's our general fund balance currently, Tanya, on the? Or with the?
Oh, the 16 million.
Yeah, so we've, we have $16 million in the bank today. Right, so worst-case scenario, we could do, we could, we could do it today. We don't, obviously don't want to do that, just time value money, we don't want to outlay that much money out of our reserves, right? Do that. So worst-case scenario, but, and also, we do know the Medicine Foundry is, with Lilly's Medicine Foundry West is, is coming in there. They've been approved of the Planning Commission, so that, that's moving forward. So it's not a question of there's nothing going to be out there, it's certainly, there's going to be more, but there is, we do know there will be stuff west along 32 that will be coming in there. So, but again, we could absolutely pay for this with cash fully today. Again, I would not recommend that, because that would deplete our reserves significantly. I don't think it's wise fiscal management, but we could, you know, if we had to, we could absolutely do that, yes. Yep. And actually, we, frankly, we could continue that operating window longer if we chose to do that as well, right? We could do that.
Good, that could be renegotiated.
We could renegotiate that, and if things had changed, we could say, hey, let's do two more years of this, and then we'll issue a bond or something like that, so, yeah. Sandra, you have a question? No? Maybe? Okay.
Once Lilly's in, will they take precedence over the community? That's, because I like the fact that that's going there, because.
Will Lilly take precedence over the community in what way?
Chief, can you answer that question?
I apologize, I couldn't.
Sandra asked if, if Lilly would take precedent over the community.
You mean like if a fire was happening at Lilly, and then down the street, would they go to Lilly first? Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
No, we, we respond by order of emergency. Let's say there was a situation where, you know, there was power lines in a rural district down, we might leave a minimally staffed piece of equipment there and respond to another emergency that would take precedent, but as far as order of response, each emergency is, is taken in the order in which it was received. And Lilly has been a great partner for us. We have met with them several times, they've expressed interest in responding off-campus for hazmat, and that's one reason that we've chosen to go with the rope, the discipline of rope rescue and trench rescue, because hazmat was definitely going to be on our radar. Hazmat is very expensive, the equipment, the training, just the on, the, the equipment that you use is highly perishable, and Lilly is taking care of that in-house, and is offering to respond off-campus to hazmat emergencies, you know, within the city. And that releases us from, from a great burden, and allows us to explore other technical disciplines. Does that make sense?
Yeah, you're, you're saying that Lilly will have its own fire department?
Lilly has, will have their own fire department, but not in the traditional terms of how you think of a fire department. They are going to be hazmat and EMS-driven. They will have a couple of firefighters on duty 24 hours a day, and then they will brigade other firefighters. And what that means, that they will take staff that they have there on campus that is cross-trained, and they will be a part of that fire brigade, brigade that will respond to incidents within the Lilly campus. But they are not traditional firefighters, like you would normally associate with the fire service. Like where we, go ahead.
So just because we're, we're helping using Lilly's finance, the taxes that they'll be paying to finance the station, doesn't mean they get some special treatment compared to everybody else?
No, absolutely not. And, and I don't, I don't think they would, that wouldn't be on the table, they wouldn't expect that. We have a, like I said, we, we're building a great relationship with responses with the Lilly Fire Department, and, and they understand both disciplines, and how we operate and how they operate. We actually spent some time last summer at Lilly Downtown, and how they do things with, within the campus, with their emergency response, their relationship with the Indianapolis Fire Department. And essentially, we're just taking that model and moving it here in the city of Lebanon. It worked, it works.
Will they have a team also with the Medicine Foundry?
No, we will be the primary response department for the Medicine Foundry. The hazmat response will come from the main Lilly campus, but we will be initial dispatch on anything at the Lilly Foundry.
Any further questions for Chief, or Kevin?
I have a question for Kevin. Kevin, do you know, is there a penalty or a, a large fee if we choose to extend the Build Operate Transfer like another year? You said it's like $400,000 a year, or something around that, but is there, do we incur like a, something negative upon the city if we would choose to keep, like, push it out one more year?
Yeah, so that would be as part of the BOT agreement that we'll have at our next meeting.
Okay.
So that's being kind of worked through at the moment, right? Really, tonight, we are essentially, essentially selecting the Greg Martz Core, RQAW team to say, hey, let's move forward with them. We schedule a public hearing for our next meeting, and then at that meeting's when we have all the BOT documents and all those types of things. So we can make sure that in the, in the agreement that we have, that we could say, hey, with X amount of notice, that we can negotiate that, or, or set a price for that, absolutely, yeah. So that'd be, that'd be in our, kind of our next meeting if. Approved tonight.
I agree with that totally. I think Chief has a comment as well.
I just wanted to let everyone know that this project has been in development for seven years, before the word LEAP even existed, or the idea of Eli Lilly coming to Lebanon. We've been working on this, pre-planning, looking at this deployment analysis. The fact that Eli Lilly and whatever businesses are coming to the city of Lebanon really had no impact on this plan. We were doing this, we are doing this for our citizens that we have, that need that four-minute response time. So the deployment analysis happened long before words like LEAP were even in existence. So this is for our taxpayers, this is for our citizens. So this is for our taxpayers, this is for our citizens, to expedite fire, EMS, and rescue response.
Any further questions? So Kevin, to clarify then, essentially, we would need the motion to accept, accept the recommendation of award to the Greg Mart's, R Q A W, and Core Construction Team?
Correct, correct. As the reasonably susceptible offer of being able to enter into a B O T agreement. And then the next item will be to set that public hearing for your next regularly scheduled meeting, where we will present and essentially negotiate that B O T agreement.
All right, at this time then, is there any public comment concerning this item? Or the discussion, comments from council, or a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the request for the, the team of Greg Mart's, Core, and R Q A W?
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Sandra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that is approved. All right, so then, next, Kevin, the public hearing scheduling?
The next item would be that, that now that you have, have, have recommended the award, that we now set a public hearing. And our recommendation is that you just set the public hearing at your next regularly, regularly occurring meeting, meeting on March tenth.
Questions or concerns with that from council? Okay. We entertain a motion then to set the B O T RFQ public hearing for March tenth, twenty-twenty-five, at seven fifteen P M? Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Sandra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that has been set, and we will also have the notices go to the paper and have that posted in City Hall, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, next item up here is Squad Two Thirteen Trench Rescue Program Discussion. Chief Bats?
I will make this very brief, but I, I would like to start with thanking the mayor and council. The, the Station Two Thirteen project, like I said, has, has been, we've been working on this for seven years, and we understand the cost and, and what it takes to move a project like this forward. We appreciate the confidence that you have in our team, not just our construction team, but our, our team and our staff at Lebanon Fire. It means a lot. We, we understand the, the depth and value of this project, and we appreciate it. So I wanted to bring council and the public up to speed on two projects that we're working on. The first one is our trench rescue program. And as I mentioned earlier, earlier this evening, we have a rope rescue program. And we have been looking at the idea of bringing a trench rescue program to the Lebanon Fire Department. With the development that we have and the development that we are going to see in the future, we feel like there is a strong need and potential for a trench rescue program. There is no one in the immediate area that has these capabilities. And we've been exploring cost of equipment, cost of training. We've reached out to Jeff Wagner of FLUR, and he has expressed interest in helping join this campaign and potentially funding parts of it. Deputy Chief Matt Young is working on a bid list for the equipment that we will need to do this. We have met with other city departments, along with the parks, the utilities, and the street department about having access to their large, large equipment, backos and skid steers and things that we may need in the event of emergency. It's our goal by the end of twenty-twenty-five to have over eighty percent of our staff trained in trench rescue, and then this project ready to go in January of twenty-twenty-six, ready to make calls for service. Does anyone have any questions about the trench rescue program?
Define trench.
Trench rescue, digging, and the trench is mismanaged and there's a collapse, trapping a worker within the trench. It would be our job to perform the rescue or the recovery, to remove that person from the trench safely. It's, it's, it's a very, very dangerous discipline, just like with rope rescue. It is a low-frequency, high-risk event. And extensive levels of training are needed to have a trench rescue program, and, and we've, we've committed to doing it.
So if you remember the news, it's been a little while, I think maybe, it may have been last year or two, year before, but there was an accident in, I believe, Noblesville, where there was a construction site, utility pipe being laid, something like that. And the, the trenching hadn't been properly secured. And unfortunately, in the situation, the, the trench collapsed on an individual, and, and he was, and he passed, right? And so obviously, you know, first responders want to get in there and help and do the right thing, but they, they can, if it's not done properly, they put themselves at risk, risk as well, too, right? And so certainly, as a lot of development is happening, certainly, we're, going to be a lot of pipelines being built towards Lebanon that will require underground trenching and, and all that. Certainly, I think it makes sense for us to, to frankly, get some more expertise in this. Again, something that you hope you never have to use, but, you know, with our ropes rescue, it is certainly something that we can provide the best possible response to people living in our community and also working in our community as well, too. And I think that's something that Chief Bats and his team did a great job of, of bringing this forward as a concept of a way to continue to pushing for higher and higher quality service from our first responders, so.
And this has been embraced by the membership of the department. They are excited about the trench rescue program. They are ready to go. We had several meetings last year, just trying to get the pulse of the department and, and not just the direction that the admin staff wants to take the department, but the membership, the, the firefighters on the apparatus every day. And they have full support of this, highly interested. It wasn't a situation where, hey, we're going to bring this and add this to your plate, and, you know, everyone starts backing up, everyone move forward. They're ready to go with this.
Is that something where if Nobbleville, something happens in Noblesville and they make a call out, you guys run over and help them?
Yes, we will make ourselves available to anyone that requests the service, because there's just really no one in the area that does it, nor south, east, or west.
What is the closest one?
Go ahead.
Noblesville does work in trench rescue. Several of the fire departments in the area in the Donut Counties have just have, have moved away from it.
Do you get reimbursed for that work?
No, that is just a gentleman's agreement, if you will. And that would be reciprocated to the city if we need assistance. We have these informal mutual aid agreements. You know, many, many years ago, twenty, thirty years ago, the mutual aid agreements were on paper. But now it's evolved, the way we have built our CAD strings. When there's a run that comes out, you could potentially see a fire truck from Brownsburg here in the city of Lebanon. You know, we see a lot from Whitestown and Zeinsville. And we just reciprocate that back to those other departments in their time of need, and no one charges the city or the department.
Like, for example, back when the Plainfield Walmart fire happened that we could all see from here, we, we actually helped shuttle water for them down to Plainfield, right? So there are things like that, right, where there's mutual aid in the larger area. And certainly, when those larger emergency-level responses are required, right? That's kind of all hands on deck, right? And so certainly, we could respond north to Lafayette or Frankfurt or, you know, the whole area. We're able to kind of help a lot of people.
Frankfurt is a good example. Frankfurt is on an island up there. There is, other than Lafayette and the city of Lebanon, there's not a lot of other fire departments, career departments in the area. And when they have a truck go down, it is not out of the ordinary for them to reach out to the city of Lebanon and say, our ladder truck is offered maintenance. What's your level of availability? And every time, it's, you call when you need us, and we'll be there. And we've responded to several structured fires within the city of Frankfurt. I don't look for that to change, ever, really, to be honest. There's very few fire departments in the state of Indiana that are self-sufficient. I mean, you have your one-offs of, you know, I F D and, you know, maybe Terre Haute. But for the most part, everyone is sharing resources.
Could you touch more on the squad portion? You've just covered the trench rescue, unless there's any more questions on the trench rescue portion of the discussion?
So I sent out a picture of a squad. Our squad will look very similar to this. It is a Ford F four fifty crew cab. It will have a twelve-foot box on the rear of it. This piece of equipment will be stationed at Station Two Thirteen. And it has, there's several goals with it. One goal is to offload the EMS calls of service on our ladder truck. Our new ladder truck weighs forty tons, and there's a lot of wear and tear that comes with a vehicle that size. So we are wanting to limit its response on EMS calls, and it will default to the squad, a much, much smaller vehicle. And we're just saving the hours and the mileage on our ladder truck by using the squad. It'll respond on EMS calls, fires, just, just about everything. It'll be an additional piece of equipment responding. And it will also be used as the primary response for our trench rescue program. We will have a twenty-foot trailer hauling the majority of our trench rescue equipment. Some of that equipment will also be in the squad, along with water rescue, and it will make those responses. We currently have a non-reverting fund for plan review. That is a little bit over eighty-five thousand dollars in it. And we are wanting to use this plan review, non-reverting fund to purchase the chassis for our squad. We've reached out to vendors to look at the squads that they already have. We found that they are excessively over, overpriced, if you will. We've decided that we can build this right here and, and essentially save money. We received three bids for the cost of the chassis, and we're proud to announce D Patrick Ford here in Lebanon was the lowest bid. Will be purchasing that F four fifty chassis from D Patrick. And then separately, we bid out the exterior of the truck, the twelve-foot box, if you will. And we had three bids for that, and McGinley Fire Apparatus here in Lebanon was the, the lowest, most effective bid. So the squad project will be totally built by Lebanon businesses. We are also using the funds of the sale of our older rescue truck, our year two thousand GMC Topkick. It has been taken to surplus, and we'll be selling that through Enterprise. And those funds will be re-appropriated, if you will, to the squad project.
The estimate on that was about forty-five to forty-seven thousand dollars value of that truck. So that, that's a good chunk towards helping fund this project with it.
So it will take about two and a half months for the chassis to be built. McGinley Fire Apparatus said it would take about three months, once they get the chassis, excuse me, to complete the truck. We know during that time, our plan review, non-reverting fund is going to grow, and we plan to continue using those funds to offset the cost of the purchase of the box. Now, at some point, we may need to come to council in mid-fall if there is a shortfall in that and, and request an additional appropriation through Lit to finish the squad project. But the majority of it will be funded through our non-reverting line and our sale of our older rescue truck.
And, and so we don't, obviously, no, we don't budget that non-reverting line, right? That's just, that's collected up over probably, I don't know, five, six years, probably, of that collection on that plan review? I mean, or even maybe longer. I don't know how long we've had that.
Tonya, can you help me out on that? I, I, I think that would probably be an accurate guess. We, we put this plan review fee in place, and I believe Kevin assisted us with it, along with Ben. And, and our inspection team is the one that handles it. And we've just collect, you know, collected that money over the years, and this is a wonderful project with it, for it.
Yeah, so again, this is something that we're using cash on hand that we've kind of saved up over the years, and it's, this is the, the goal that they want to put the project towards, so.
That is a slang term for us. Okay. It's a unrestricted, non-reverting account. That, that's the jargon for the Clerk Treasurer's Office. For us, it's generated through plan review. That's, that. That's, yes, that's how we describe it in-house, how we're discussing, how we spend different lines. That's, that's the word that we use for it.
Sandra, question?
Yeah, and then while the truck, the chassis, the whole thing's being built, your team is going to be at the same time training to learn so that by the time it's done, they'll be pretty much.
Yes, we, we think this truck will be finished around October or November. That's when we're going to be concluding the training on the trench rescue, and this program should be ready to go January one.
And is there a cost for that training?
The cost of that training is approximately seven hundred and fifty dollars per person. But again, we are looking to partner with Jeff Wagner and FLUR. They've showed a great deal of interest in, in assisting with that. As an example, our rope rescue program was partially funded by U S Cold Storage. They've been a great public safety partner.
Thank you.
Any further question on that? There's no action tonight. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. This is just kind of a discussion, kind of keep you guys updated with that as we move forward with it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, that concludes what I have for new business. Anything from the council?
Yeah, I got one thing. Since we're talking public safety, it's been about two years ago that I think we started a, a study of our police department, you know, and I know there's a huge number on that building, and we have not had that report brought back to us. And I think, you know, for the public to understand what we got out of that study and for them to understand the need, I think we need to have a presentation to the council to let the public know that this is also a need in our community that needs to be taken care of. And I, I realize it's a huge number, but they need to know that there's a huge number for something like that.
Yeah, that's a very good point, Dick. I've, I think we had planned to have them last year, and then things got pretty hectic at the end of the year. And so that, oh, we'll, I'll reach out back out to D L Z and see if we can get kind of a, an update kind of presentation for council on the upcoming year's springtime. Yep. Okay. Anything else from a new business standpoint?
Do we have a timeframe at all on where that's going to be a lot purchased or where we're considering?
Well, the, the number we got from the study was forty-four million dollars.
I, I've seen those.
Yeah.
Parts of them. But do we have an idea where we're going to try to look for a lot for this?
We, we haven't. Frankly, the, I mean, when I, when I came in as mayor, I, we had a couple of priorities. Getting the street department garage fixed was one priority. That's now been done. Getting Station Two, or Thirteen built, obviously, that's moving forward now. And then the police station was kind of the last one, kind of coming as kind of a final kind of thing. And frankly, the, you know, the fire station ended up being, you know, obviously, with inflation, times change, right, things like that. That was more than I had expected it to be. That's kind of why that project took longer to kind of work through that process. And then frankly, you're seeing a forty-four million dollar kind of estimated cost for a police station was a little challenging for me, right? And so that's probably why it hasn't moved forward. So we haven't really picked a site, or, we haven't, we have the space study done, and it kind of gives different options of if you wanted to go kind of more of a, more of a, a larger site or more of an urban site, there kind of was a kind of analysis done with that as part of that project. But we really just haven't moved it forward because it's, it's such a big number. And obviously, our police station is not getting in better shape as we move forward with it, but it's, 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 that's such a large number that it was hard to kind of really move that forward without some direction from you guys, and so.
Old street garage there instead of a park, because we already have that?
We haven't really. The challenge with that is, again, this is a little bit of a philosophy, but we, we feel like the, the police station needs to be somewhere in kind of the downtown core area just from a visibility, accessibility standpoint. And so putting it on Lafayette Avenue is really, we, we just feel like a, a park is a better use of that site than for a police station for it.
Well, you'll just have to double up and make it a high-rise then where it's at, because I don't think there's anything in town.
Kind of what the study looked at, too, is, is, you know, do you do kind of a multiple-story type station versus a, you know, larger squat station, you know? So there's, there's different approaches to it, but again, it's still, it's still a really big number. Really big number. And, and that's fair, right? But also, it's, yeah, it's a big number, so. When, I would say, though, when the, when the cost of the station is forty-four million dollars, the price of the land is not a significant percentage of that cost. So at some level, we have to say, are we going forward with that or not before we even pick a site, so. All right, anything else on new business? Okay, move on to claims. We entertain a motion concerning the claims.
Make a motion, we pay the claims?
I want to give it to John. I think you're slightly ahead. Motion for John, second from Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Claims are approved. Any further announcements or discussion from council?
Just one, the Kiwanis Pancake Supper's coming up, April the tenth.
See Mike for tickets, right?
See me for tickets.
Okay.
Well, they're available at the door, too. I see Matt Wilson's in the audience. He has tickets also.
Okay, very good. Find your local Rotarian, or Kiwanian, sorry. Kiwanian, I would be in trouble, sorry. Kiwanian, apologies. All right, with that, our next city council meeting will be Monday, March tenth, at seven fifteen P M. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Motion adjourn and a second. Motion to adjourn, and a second from Keith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.